President, Mayor Moss is present. Councilmember Kremel is present. Councilmember Young is absent.
Okay, if you would, please rise. We'll have a moment of silence. This past week, we had Ms. Leah Young's father pass away. Please remember her in your prayers. And Ms. Fennell's husband's grandfather passed away. So if you would, join me, please, in a moment of silence. Thank you. Councilman Contreras is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. We have a proclamation. Would Chief Lenore come forward, please?
This is a proclamation honoring the National Day of Service and Remembrance. Whereas on September 11, 2001, the American people endured the courage of heroism, the worst terrorist attacks and missile in our nation's history, coming together in the marked spirit of patriotism and unity, performing countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas President Bush proclaimed September 11 as Patriot Day in 2002, and Congress approved and enacted into law the Edward M. Kennedy Serve America Act on April 21, 2009, designating September 11 as the National Day of Service and Remembrance. And whereas September 11, 2020, marks the 19th anniversary of the ruthless terrorist attacks on our country, and 12th National Day of Remembrance, and participating in service and remembrance activities on September 11 is a positive, respectful way to remember those who lost their lives at the Pentagon, the World Trade Center, and in a field in southwest Pennsylvania, to pay tribute to those who rose in service, and to honor those who continue to serve our country today, including veterans, soldiers, military families, and first responders. And whereas we, as a community, wish to honor the heroic service, actions, and sacrifices of first responders, law enforcement personnel, state and local officials, volunteers, and countless others who aided the innocent victims of those attacks, risking and then sacrificing their own lives. And whereas the City Council and City of Willow Park wish to recognize the valiant service and sacrifice given each day by members of our armed forces, intelligence agencies, diplomatic services, homeland security, and Willow Park Public Safety Department to support the cause of freedom and defend the security of our nation. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority invested in me as mayor of the City of Willow Park, on behalf of the Willow Park City Council, all staff and citizens hereon, I do hereby proclaim Wednesday, September 11, 2020, the Stop and Remember 9/11 National Moment of Remembrance. And I encourage everyone to observe one moment of remembrance with silence and prayer in honor of those who gave their lives on Wednesday, September 11, 2020, at 12 noon PM Central Central Time, and never forget on this 19th anniversary of the Day of Remembrance. Thank you. If you join me in standing.
And Alicia, we have no public comments, correct?
Sir, we had one public comment from a citizen that was received after the deadline. That comment will be attached to the final minutes.
Thank you. Item number A, approve city council meeting minutes, August 25, 2020 workshop and regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes of August 25, 2020, for the workshop and regular meeting minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Thank you. Regular agenda item. Item number one, to discuss, consider, and act on approving a proposed tax rate. Mr. Grimes.
Counsel, this is new to you guys per SB 2 that was passed last spring by the legislature. You now have to adopt a proposed tax rate, wherein years past, we would have a range of tax rates and then finally have an adoption period. This year, your proposed tax rate, and this is the tax rate we've been working off of for better over a month, your MNO rate is .2685, your interest in sinking rate is .2682, and gives you a total tax rate of .5367. This is the same overall tax rate as the previous year.
Any questions for Mr. Grimes? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the adopted proposed tax rate of .5367.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion for Mr. Grimes? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two, to discuss, consider, and act on the appointment of members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that Ms. Betty, or is that you, Mr. Grimes?
It's Ms. Chu.
The, there are two regular places on the commission and the alternate commission. These are all three reappointments, and they will accept reappointment to the commission. Rodney Wilkins, Scott Smith is the alternate, and Jo Lane is the other place. Any questions?
Okay. Do we have any questions for Betty, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission as read.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions for Betty? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Betty. Item number three, to discuss, consider, and act on a final plan for Meadow Place Estates Edition Phase Two, being 9.18 acres, John Froman survey abstract number 471, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, and being a portion of Lot 1, Block 2, Trinity Meadows Edition, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, located on the northeast corner of Meadow Place Drive and Kings Gate Road. Betty?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a final plat for Phase Two of the Meadows Place Edition. The preliminary plat for this subdivision was approved October 9 of 2018. That preliminary plat contained 11.17 acres of land. If you look on your exhibits, and we'll talk about actually three and four, agenda items three and four together because they do relate, the final plat that we're talking about for Phase Two is now 9.18 acres of land. The developer is proposing to add the 1.99 acres, which is primarily floodplain and floodway, located behind Block F. I've highlighted on the plat in orange, I guess, kind of muddy orange, the area that will comprise Phase Two, that is the 9.18 acres. The, this portion of the plat will be planted into 18 single-family lots. They will all front on Belmont Drive, which is a proposed 50-foot right-of-way, and Meadows Place Drive is a 60-foot right-of-way on the south part of the subdivision. The developer will construct the streets with concrete pavement, carbon gutter, and sidewalks. Kings Gate is adjacent to the subdivision to the west, and it is a 60-foot right-of-way. There will be 8-inch water and sanitary surrains installed by the developer, and there will be fire hydrants installed in accordance with ISO regulations. Stormwater in this area flows primarily from north to south across the subdivision, and there is a portion of Block F, and you can see where it says there is a variable width drainage easement. That is also, if you look on the second exhibit, highlighted in yellow, that is the actual drainage easement detail. That's the second page of your exhibit. There, that area is, since it is floodplain and floodway, finished floor elevations are shown for all of the lots in Block F, because those are required by FEMA and by the flood insurance program. This plat also contains a 25-foot trail easement for trail development, as indicated in the park's master plan, and that's the area shown on the first page. Those are all at the back of the lots in Block F. This final plat has been reviewed by staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission. It does meet the requirements of the city's subdivision ordinance for a final plat, and it comes with both staff and commission's recommendation for approval. Do y'all have any questions? And Mr. Stocken is here also, the developer.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat for Meadow Place Estates Edition Phase Two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And item number four goes with three, correct?
Yes, sir.
To discuss, consider, and act to a final plat of a replat of lots 5R1, 5R2, 5R3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, Block A, Meadow Place Estates, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, located on Breeders Drive. And the information you gave us was the same information as?
Yes. Now, the area, the 1.99 acres will be at the back of the lots. You can see, highlighted in orange, the new boundaries of those nine lots, and the green line that kind of runs down the middle is the old, original back property line. This area, as I said, is primarily floodplain and floodway. Any future structures or development of these properties will require elevation certificates also because of the floodplain being, and floodway being a part of those lots now. This final plat for these nine lots has been reviewed by staff and by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it does meet the requirements of the city's subdivision ordinance for a final plat, and is recommended for approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that.
How much elevation are they looking to come up? Do we know, as far as the dirtwork?
Now, are you talking about in the original phase? I mean, in Phase Two?
Yes, Phase Two.
Phase Two? Oh. No, Phase Two. The one we've already finished on, where the new lots? It's, it's a pretty significant, because if you remember, that kind of drops off, you can kind of see where they cleaned out some of the undergrowth, and the, primarily the structure will be on the front, I would say the front half of the new lots in Phase Two, that are on the east side of Breeders. Yes.
Okay.
And then, of course, the trail dedication is along, I guess I would say, not the back of those lots, but the back of the, past the buildable area.
Got it.
Any other questions for Betty? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat, the replat of lots 5R1, 5R2, 5R3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, Block A, Meadows Place, City of Willow Park.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions for Betty or Mr. Stocken? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Betty. Well, you better sit tight.
I was gonna stay right here.
Item number five, presentation on zoning ordinance, zoning ordinances update.
Wanted to visit with y'all one last time. We talked back in February about several zoning ordinance amendments that we are working on. And actually, next month, there will be a public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider these updates, and I wanted to go over them with you one more time. With regard to fire lanes and access easements, our current ordinance says they will be a minimum of 20-foot wide, or they will be 20-foot wide. Minimum fire lanes, per the fire code that is adopted, is 24, so we set that at a minimum of 24-foot in width. Sometimes you'll see them increase in size to 26, depending on, on height of structures and density. So that is one proposed amendment. In the R5, single-family, medium-density district, the garages are allowed to be front-facing garages, but right now, the way the ordinance is written, it requires that they be divided garage doors, or two-garage doors. The problems we're encountering on a standard garage, when you do those two-garage doors with that center post, if it's anything other than a smaller car, you can't get two vehicles in the garage. And what it's creating is kind of an on-street parking problem for us, because they can get maybe one car in the garage, well then you've got a car or two in the driveway or in the street. And if, with on-street parking on those streets, we're really kind of creating a kind of a hazard for public safety entering and exiting those streets. So by allowing the single garage doors, that will give us more width, so hopefully you can get two vehicles, unless you're like our family, and you're junky and you only get my vehicle in the garage. With regard to the required screening, if you remember, when the R5 was adopted, they said that there would be a footer, concrete footer, under the fence. And what happened, I think it probably was an error, because they were requiring that the concrete footer be four to six inches above gray, and we were creating little mini swimming pools in those backyards. So what we're doing, we're proposing to modify that it will be four inches deep, the concrete footer, and six inches wide, which is what a normal concrete footer is for a fence. Also, we are proposing that the fences be a minimum of, a minimum of six foot, and there are wooden or masonry fence that's required in R5, and a maximum height of eight feet. That gives a little bit of flexibility. We've got some lots in some of these areas that have elevation differences, and so people, if they can have that extra two foot, it will help them some with that fence. So that's the other proposed amendment. And then we were proposing to delete the reversal of building plans. It really was kind of confusing, and it didn't serve any useful purpose in that. In the R1, single-family district, under special conditions and uses, it provided for manufactured housing. And when we discussed that in February, we talked about deleting the requirement to allow manufactured housing in R1, because we do have a manufactured housing district zoning classification, so it's not a prohibition, it's just going back to the R1 as it was. In the R3 multifamily district, right now, the maximum apartment units allowed per acre is eight. We have discussed increasing that to 18 units per acre, which is pretty much what was done with the apartments over on Crown Point Boulevard. That's, that's the density that they have. So that will be one of the proposed changes. Also, in the multifamily fire suppression system regulations, it talked about the uniform building code, which no longer is used by the city. The city uses the international building codes and fire codes, so we will make that change. And then there was a provision that talked about a new certificate of occupancy being required for each apartment unit prior to leasing to a new occupant. That's not doable. If, if an apartment complex is sold, and there's a new occupancy for that new owner, then the area is reevaluated and re-inspected. But I've really never seen a city that every time a unit changes occupants or tenants.
You mean when the, one tenant moves out, and another new tenant moves in?
Right. That is, that is within that.
They'd have to dedicate somebody full-time.
Yeah, you'd probably too. But anyway, that will be removed from the ordinance, from the requirements of the ordinance. And then I guess probably the primary one that we've talked about is the new development site plans for multifamily, commercial, and industrial, that require approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission and Council. And I think as we all knew, we, we almost got caught, you know, with some projects that were delayed or maybe not, not come to fruition during the pandemic, beginning of the pandemic. We, we worked through it, but we had talked about making that change. They will still develop their site plans under the same criteria, it's just that, as long as that site plan meets the requirements of the city's ordinance, it will not go to Planning and Zoning Commission and Council. If there was something that was requested that does not meet the ordinance, then it'll go through proper channels. Off-street parking and loading requirements. Our ordinance is not clear in the requirement for concrete pavement in parking lots, which has pretty much been the norm in all, but we're going to do a clarification in the off-street parking and loading requirements to require all parking spaces, driveways, display areas, and off-street loading spaces to be constructed in concrete type. So that's, that's a minor change in there. It's pretty ambiguous. And then, with regard to public, municipal, state, and/or federal-owned facilities or uses, which are normally in most ordinances permitted in all zoning districts, and, and we will make that change, that installations owned and operated by the City of Willow Park, Parker County, the State of Texas, or public utilities, which installations are necessary for the public safety, governmental services, or the furnishing of utility services, including communication equipment towers, are permitted in all zoning districts. And then, I believe there's an exception on that, 75 feet in height.
Thank you.
So that will be included. We've had some questions with regard to landscape regulations, as far as making some alternatives in our landscape ordinance for more what I call zero-scape or exerscape-type installations. Also, we're looking at, as an alternative, and, and also looking at maybe some means to incentivize people to use more drip irrigation, more drought-tolerant plants to this area, to allow, maybe give them some kind of credit. In other words, like if they're supposed to have 15% of their area landscaped, and they'll go in and put in, you know, a drip irrigation system and all, or maybe drought-tolerant type plants, then we'll give them some type of credit to, to encourage them to use those, which will, you know, will help us with water conservation. It may take us a couple of months to work on that, but there's a few good ordinances around, and we all plagiarize each other anyway. And then finally, last but not least, we are working on the sign ordinance. We are looking at possibly increasing the height and the size for the freestanding signs within a certain distance of the interstate. In other words, some of the, some of the properties that are joining above the interstate, to allow them to have a sign that would be more in, in keeping with interstate properties. Probably the rest of the commercial will remain at the 30-foot high, and we'll adjust the areas. But with the exception of the sign ordinance and the landscape regulations, which will probably be around the first of the year before you'll see those, you should in November see the remaining seven major changes that we talked about. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Overdue.
Overdue. I know, I'm slow.
No. It's nothing wrong.
Appreciate you getting it done.
Yeah, we appreciate it, Betty.
Thank y'all. If y'all have any questions after.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number six, to discuss, consider, and act to authorize staff to seek competitive bids on the following items. Bid package number one, water line from Fort Worth to Willow Park. Bid package number...
Yeah, I got them out of order for a reason.
Okay. Item number three is water line from Willow Park to Hudson Oaks. Package two is construction of ground storage tank and pump station. Mr. Grimes?
This is related to the Fort Worth Water Project, and tonight I have Preston Dillard with half, and Derek Turner, obviously our consulting engineer. We are asking council to approve the RFP, which is basically the ad that's going to go in the paper for its period of run for a couple of weeks. Bid package one is, and I'll let them get into the particulars on it, it's essentially the line that's going to go from the Fort Worth interconnect to 203 El Chico. Bid package three is a water line that's going to leave that location and go to Hudson Oaks and interconnect with them roughly around Micus Road. And bid package two is a construction of ground storage tank and pump station. And so we're putting this in three different things. We, unless something's changed, I'll let Preston and Derek add on if they want to. Bid package one and three, we have the plan specs and the construction docs ready to go, and so we're comfortable putting that bid out there, that ad out there now. Bid package two, we may delay a couple of weeks as we get the plans, the specs, and the con docs on those. Essentially, we know what the easement's going to be on the two water lines, we know what size pipe we want. The ground storage tank is going to be a little bit more technical, and requires a little bit more detail at this time, but we wanted to get approval from council to run the ad, so we can try to expedite this project as fast as possible. And I'll let Derek and Preston feel free to add anything they choose to.
How long will the, go ahead.
I was gonna say, these are all gonna run in parallel to expedite the process?
Well, I think as Brian mentioned, the package one and two, the two pipeline, or simply one and three, the two pipeline packages, could be roughly in construction in parallel. It'd be two different contractors. It'll be a bit of a delay before the El Chico site gets under construction, which would be a third contractor.
Okay.
How long's the ad run in the paper? Or when will we get the bid, I guess?
We'll get, we'll get ads on the 15th for the water line from Fort Worth to Willow Park, and the 22nd for Willow Park to Hudson Oaks, October.
Okay. Great, great news. Moving forward.
Did y'all want to add anything? You look like you want to speak.
Not really.
You feeling good, Derek?
I'm good.
Good, good.
We don't see major showstoppers, though. This could, once they start turning dirt, take a move quick, right?
The water line will go really fast.
Okay.
We're hoping the Fort Worth to Willow Park port of the water line will be in place and available to set up some kind of temporary connection if that, if that has to happen next summer, so that we can actually take water off the line.
Okay.
Yeah, the pump station package and the ground storage tank package, number, item number two, that's a bit more of a challenge for the engineering side of it, and it's a part of a construction project as well, so the construction length on that will take a little while. Pipeline projects, once the contractors onboard and the easement's in place, that they should feel fairly straightforward.
Yeah, good.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to authorize staff to seek competitive bids for the three bid packages as read.
Second.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, guys. Item number seven, I'm sorry?
I was telling them, thank you.
Item number seven, to consider and act to authorize city staff to transfer funds from the general fund investment account in the amount of $67,500 to the Cross Timbers Park Fund to pay for the construction of park improvements. Mr. Grimes?
In the...
Or Mr. Parker, who am I talking to?
We'll tag him, but you can...
You can start it.
So in 2019, we issued a tax note for a number of things, one of which was construction of the Cross Timber Park that was removed for the construction of the new Public Safety Building. And so we had half a million budgeted for construction of that park. Engineering costs and some other construction costs have come in, and so one of the things that we're asking council to do is to transfer, we have 67... that we're asking council to do is to transfer, we have $67,500, I think the number's closer to $75,000, there was a couple of last-minute calculations that we didn't get in by Friday, to move $75,000 from either a TechStar Fund or a general government CD that I think will mature in November anyway, and take those funds and put them into this construction project for the Cross Timbers Park.
Okay. You concur, Mr. Parker?
I do. As far as you'll see on the next agenda item, the reason why, it's for the cover of Alt-Bid One and Alt-Bid Two, and then just a little bit over the general bid, construction. We had great bids came back on this project, and we'll talk about that a little bit more on this next agenda item, but this is the transfer to work. And I'd be happy to whoever, Alt-Bid One, Alt-Bid Two, if you like.
Okay. Do we have a motion on item number seven?
I'll make a motion to authorize city staff to transfer funds as read. Do we need to change the amount to $75,000?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
In the amount of $75,000.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions?
Yeah, did the parks group, I mean, the team, did they go through this, and they're fully behind it and everything?
As far as, prior to us issuing, the Parks Board did get their input, and we had a presentation from PK. That's the last time the Parks Board met. We came back here at city council and looked for direction on whether or not we wanted to hold true to our $500,000 budget that we initially had from issuing the tax note, or did we want to increase it to a little over a million? And the direction from council gave us was half a million. So we had our direction from council back to PK and said, listen, this is where our budget is, and then the margin was, what can we get for that? And they came back, and we did a presentation with council, and it showed you playground. It really could be like a phase one, we set it up to where you could do multiple phases and add on to it, so whenever funds become available, so.
Okay.
Long answer, yes and yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
I want to ask real quick, the $75,000 we're authorizing, that's gonna, like, as we moved into the next agenda item, this is good, we're confident this covers any of the alternatives, no matter what selection is made, or is there a possibility where you could come back for requesting further funds to be transferred from?
Those are, our recommendation's gonna be to go the lowest bidder on this, and you'll see, this allows us to do Alt-Bid One and Alt-Bid Two. Alt-Bid One would be your hard surfaces, instead of doing a soft surface, we can do a hard surface, more all-inclusive participants within our park. And Alt-Bid Two does light fixtures, conduits, connections to pool boxes. So we were able to pull, because we were thinking that bids may come in over what we had budgeted for, and this so happened, the next, the person that we're gonna mention, the next one came within our, the lowest bidder, and fell within our budget of half a million.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Bernie. Item number eight, to consider an act on awarding a bid for the Cross Timbers Park.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. In your packet, you'll see we have placed in there a recommendation from PK, and also you'll see a bid tabulation sheet that we have listed all the companies that bid on our park, which we were very happy to receive six bids on there, and it has their base bid. You can see that as they were called out during our bid opening on the 28th of August. And you can see on the contractor summary sheet of PK, the two lowest bidders with their qualifications, and they did their due diligence in checking out their references, what you're allowed to do on the past agenda item when you did additional $75,000. We can now do Alt-Bid One, our base bid, Alt-Bid One, and Alt-Bid Two by going to Coal Construction. So staff's recommendation and PK's recommendation is to award the Cross Timbers Playground Contract to Coal Construction.
We got six bids?
Yes, sir.
Is that standard, or is that normal?
To be quite honest, to be quite frank with you, I'm ecstatic that we got that based on the price of the project. To be honest, we'd have been happy with three. Now that's where we were looking to come in, but we got six.
Good.
I want to add, I got an email from Leah Young about this, and she did concur that, and I'm reading it from her email, that I recommend accepting the lowest bid, which is full construction.
Okay.
And then with Alt-Bid One and Two, correct, Bernie?
Yes, sir. With Alt-Bid One and Two.
And Bernie, that total is $487,000 and some change on that, which is still under the $500,000, including both base, Alt-One, Alt-Two.
Yeah, that, here's the other thing for this council, it also includes the engineering, because engineering was when we approved the engineering bid, so you have engineering. I just want, just to be transparent, engineering costs associated, plus your base bid, plus your Alt-Bid One, Alt-Bid Two, so. Because initially, out of the 580, which was, we approved that, engineering went out of that, so we had 420. So then therefore, we had, we thought we had additional funds that we could make up from other departments to transfer, then, but based on state law didn't allow us to do that, so therefore, we're asking for the request to come out of the funds that Mr. Grimes had made mention.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the bid?
I'll make a motion to award the bid to Contractor Coal Construction Incorporated for Cross Timbers Park.
Pat, what do you say, base bid and Alt-Bid One, Alt-Bid Two?
Base bid of $427,258. Bid alternate one, $44,620, and bid alternate two, $15,616, for a total of $487,494.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions for Bernie? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you.
Thank the Parks Board for us also. Item number nine, to consider an act on a resolution, we're doing this one, correct?
Yes, sir, we are.
Consider an act on resolution 2020-08, a resolution of adopting the Texas Coalition for Affordable Powers, TCAP, Professional Services Agreement, and GEXA Energy's Commercial Electric Service Agreement for power to be provided on or after January 1, 2021. Mr. Grimes?
So for a number of years, the city's been involved in TCAP, and basically, they negotiate wholesale and power rates on our behalf. You see a tremendous amount of savings, because there's a number of... Pat, how many cities are you estimating in TCAP?
I think there's close to 100, I think.
So you use the bargaining power of 100 different communities to negotiate a cheaper rate, and I think they're vendors. Is it GEXA? Is that who it is, Pat?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. So staff recommends that we renew our membership into TCAP.
So it'll renew in January?
Sir?
For the January, it'll, when does it renew?
It'll expire in January of...
No, it's this January.
Yeah, this January.
Okay.
So we're looking to renew it before...
Okay.
And we, I think we have to do it before our fiscal year, too.
And this is part of their strategic, they have adopted a new program. I had, I sent their presentation this last year. Basically, with our experts, they're gonna time, basically, the purchase of power every time at the bottom price they can get, and they're literally gonna buy every day. And they've got experts that can time the purchase this to get the best price on a composite for all its members. So this is a really good program, and it's, they're really working hard to get the best price. City's, the reason we're so good a client for them is we have a great load profile, since we have more load during the day, and at night, we have a relatively low load, so that's a very attractive load to buy for. So at the end of the day, this group has really saved cities millions of dollars. Great program.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Grimes, or do we have a motion?
Do we need to read the resolution, or just...
If you'll just move to approve the resolution adopting, but it's just kind of correct there in the agenda item.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 22, excuse me, 2020-08, a resolution adopting the Texas Coalition of Affordable Powers Professional Services Agreement and GEXA Energy's Commercial Electric Service Agreement for power to be provided on or after January 21, or January 1, 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Item number 10, to consider an act on items to be considered for future council meetings?
What I have so far is, we're gonna adopt the budget, first of all, we'll have a public hearing on the tax rate, and, excuse me, on the budget at 6:30, and then we will adopt the budget and tax rate at 7 o'clock at the regular meeting. And then the other one I have is any and all bids, if we receive any, for the potential property swap that we put in the paper two weeks ago.
For, with the church?
Yes.
Very good.
When does that close?
18th is the day they have to submit the proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, this Friday.
Very good.
Next Friday.
Week from.
Week from Friday.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I'm already moving ahead.
Okay, any other items?
No, sir.
Okay. Item number 11, to consider an act on setting the date and time for the next council meeting.
September...
22nd. 22nd?
Yes, sir.
And we'll have a public hearing there also, correct?
Yes, sir.
Six?
6:30.
6:30?
Yes, sir.
And the council meeting will be 7:00 PM? Okay?
No executive, we have no executive session items, sir.
Okay. I have no comments. Let's keep Ms. Leah and Amy in our prayers and thoughts, and appreciate everyone tonight. We've got a lot of stuff going on, it's a lot of good stuff. I'm very excited about the 22nd, about the land thing with the church. I think that'll be, that'll be a great thing. So I'm happy for council's help with that. Mr. Grimes, you have anything?
I want to thank our public work staff. They've done a lot of yeoman's work in the last couple of weeks, battling a number of different issues, and I want to compliment Michelle for coming in and really just kind of, you know, yowing up and taking the reins and coming in in a really difficult situation. And I'm very pleased with what she's doing so far. I'm thankful for all the department heads. This budget process has not been the easiest, but with COVID, I think everybody understood some of the limitations we had. And, but I want to thank the two chiefs specifically for their assistance and their leadership on a number of these issues, and that's all I have.
Very good. Anyone else have anything?
No, I echo Mayor your comments on Mayor Pro Tim Young's loss, and Councilman Fennell's loss, and my heart, and my family's heart goes out to them and their families, and we're gonna keep him in our prayers.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.